... please. Can we get the Pledge of Allegiance from Councilman Sisarcik, please?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, united one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for attending tonight. We do have an absence from Councilman Moore. He is ill today. Can I get a motion for his absence?
I'll move.
Second?
Second. It's been so long since I've been here.
Thank you.
That's why we had to all move our chairs down to reach our buttons.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vera Papa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Sisarcik.
Here.
Councilmember Masalave.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This time we'll go over the approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances by motion of the City Council. This is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or arrange the order of the agenda. Do we have any such changes at this time?
I'd like to poll item E.
Item E. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item, which is our presentations. We have a Career Technical Education Month. We have two fine representatives from the North Orange County Regional Occupational Program and also the Los Alamos School Board. Can Kathy Kent and Karen Russell, please come out, please? Hi.
Good evening. Thank you very much. On behalf of Superintendent Jim Moreno, we accept this proclamation. I really appreciate it. We are career technical educators. We have three of our teachers at Los Alamos High School, an EMR instructor, American Sign Language, and also careers with children, where the high school students actually work one-on-one with the preschool students. And that's been a preschool up and running in our community for over 30 years. So, thank you very much for the recognition.
Great, thank you. Ms. Russell?
I'm here representing Mika Tulley, who happens to be our board representative to the Regional Occupation Program Board. And she's on her way to South Africa as we speak. And so, I told her I would come in her place. And we do have a really strong emphasis on career technical education, because as you all know, not every child is going to go to college. And we need to have those programs available for them. And as I was telling my colleague here, that we, I always make it a point to go and observe those classes when I go around to the schools. And it's really wonderful that we do have these in place. So, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. And this city of Seal Beach proclaims February as a Career and Technical Education Month. So, thank you very much for that. Okay, next up is the Coyote Management Plan. I believe we have a representative from the city of Long Beach and Seal Beach. Ted Stevens, thank you.
We just do it with mind waves.
Honorable mayor and council members, thanks for having me back again. Just to kind of provide just a brief, kind of short update on kind of where we are with coyotes in Seal Beach and the management plan. My name is Ted Stevens. I'm the Bureau Manager of Long Beach Animal Care Services. And just briefly, Long Beach Animal Care Services, our overarching policy when it comes to wildlife is that we encourage a healthy coexistence of the public and the natural wildlife. I mean, Seal Beach is surrounded by natural open spaces, whether it's the weapon station, or the wetlands, the riverbed, all those things. So, that's kind of our policy on that. When it comes to responding to coyote calls, we will respond to sick or injured calls, which we did. Actually, we have an injured call last month. We had multiple officers out. Unfortunately, the coyote was still able to flee, can run and jump and get away. But we did respond immediately. We called out backup, multiple officers, to look for the coyote patrol. We reached out to the city and to the police department, who offered assistance. We reached out to Fish and Wildlife, who offered assistance if the coyote came back. And so, that is definitely something we will respond to. We will respond if they're out during the day, which this sick or injured coyote was, out in the middle of the day, or if there's threatening or attack on a person. So, those, anything that has to do with public safety or sick or injured coyote are things that we will respond to. But a call that it's 2:00 in the morning and the coyote's walking down the street, and he's not bothering anybody, is not typically something we would respond to. So, the Coyote Management Plan in Seal Beach, which I know I was a part of, there was a committee put together. But by then, I think, I think it was Mayor Deaton at the time headed up that committee. And I know I participated at and assisted. And there was a management plan adopted in 2015. And it had a management strategy, which had kind of three tiers, balancing respect for wildlife along with public safety. So, public education, and I know, I'll talk a little bit, a little bit more about it later, but we've done a lot of public education over the years and recently, enforcement of laws and regulations for feeding wildlife, and then tiered responses. There is a tiered response plan based on the level of activity, what type of response that the city will take. But education really is the key. It's, I mean, residents need to be educated on coyotes. They're not going away. They're everywhere. They're all over the country. They're all over Southern California. And so, education is the key for residents to be able to make appropriate decisions regarding their safety and managing their pet's safety. This involves decreasing attractants, hazing, and things like that. We do have, actually, our city provides a very robust monitoring and data collection system, and we have for several, several years. I believe we have data going all the way back to 2010 regarding the levels of activity that are within the city. And we'll get into some of those numbers in a little bit. And that's something that most cities don't have. Most cities have only started really, if they even have anything, is only a year or two old. So, we have a very robust program. We have an online, and I was wishing we'd be able to see it better. But there's actually on our website, and there's a whole section on wildlife. You can get there. You can, you can report your coyote activity online. You don't have to call and be on hold or wait for someone to answer the phone. You can do it right away. Generally, things that are emailed to us through that get put in the next day or so into our system. And that's how the majority of our calls come in, or activities are done through the website. This is, if you click on wildlife, there's two large blue buttons there. One, again, is how to report coyote activity. And then the other one takes you to a map, which I'm going to show you in a little bit. But there's multiple places on our website where you can get to reporting coyote activity. And here's kind of the form right here. You fill out this form, you hit click at the end, it submits it, and it goes right to us, and we take care of it. So, it's pretty easy. And we've had this for a long time. And again, most cities don't have this. And I can almost guarantee that most cities don't have this as well either. So, we actually have this map system here. You can kind of see Seal Beach. I tried to center Seal Beach. You guys know what you're doing. It's kind of right there. You can see Leisure World right next to that right box on the right-hand side. There's Leisure World right there. This is all of 2017. So, you can kind of see downtown Seal Beach. You can see the wetlands area in the middle. You can see, right in the very top middle, you can see College Park West. There's some activity in there, a lot of activity in Leisure World. And then, when you click on those buttons, it actually opens up, and it gives you the information, the date, the exact address, what type of incident it was. Was it a sighting? Was it a pet attack? So, all that information comes when you click on the box. So, all that information is readily available. You can also go, I didn't pull it up here, but there's a way to actually go into the tables in the upper right-hand corner. You can change the map to actually look like the city. There's topography you can put in there. It's actually very, very fancy, more than we probably need. You can actually go in there. You can download a list. If you want to download an Excel spreadsheet of all the activity, you can get the information that way as part of our Open Gov, Transparent Government in Long Beach. So, all that information is available. That's all 2017. So far in 2018, this is what we have. You see kind of three up in College Park West and sightings, and then a little bit down here in the downtown area. And again, just showing kind of the boxes when you open them up. As far as reported activity goes, I didn't go all the way back to 2010, but just so you can kind of see where we're at and where we, which way the city's been going. In 2014, you can see we had 17 attacks suspected. So, what a suspected attack is, it's 99% of the time, it's a cat that we're picking up. We don't know that a coyote killed the cat. We just know that the cat looks like it's been eaten by a coyote. But we don't know if the cat was hit by a car, already dead, and then the coyote ate it. So, we don't really know for certain. So, we have it as an attack suspected. So, that's kind of the difference between that. And a pet attack is typically one that somebody sees or hears, or it's, there's confirmation that there was an actual pet attack. And then we have sightings, stalking, and threats. You can see the numbers there in 2014. You see a marked difference in 2015 and 16. 2017 goes up to 67, but I can tell you of those sightings right there, the 61, 47 of those were in November and December of last year. Just recently, November and December was when all the sightings started coming in, probably because we did a big educational campaign. We sent information to Leisure World, and they put everything out to all of their residents. We worked, I worked with Patrick, and he got information out to the community and through the media. And so, it kind of kicked in everyone's level of alertness, and started, everyone started calling and reporting everything, which is not a bad thing. It's a good thing. But you can see the number of pet attacks was really small. Of the five pet attacks in 2017, four of those were cats. And one was a dog, but there was only injuries. It wasn't, it wasn't killed. It was uninjured. It was just minor injuries. And then so far in 2018, it's sightings. And those were pretty much January and this month. So, you can kind of see where we're going. Not as many pets. People are protecting their pets a little bit, a little bit better. So, that's kind of what, what I had for you today. I know Bob is here from the Naval Weapons Station. He was going to talk a little bit about what's going on with the coyotes in the weapon station. And I'll stick around.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you. Do you want me to ask them now?
Questions now?
What's easier for you? Want to wait for the whole thing?
Matter of me. I can answer now.
While you're here?
Okay.
Yeah, these are specific to Long Beach.
Sure.
A couple of things. What, sorry, Bob. What's, how does Long Beach use the map? What's the advantage of just having a map that shows you where the coyotes are? How do you use that?
So, I will use it if there's, I'll use it more if there's serious incidents. So, like in Long Beach, we've actually had some pretty high-level, orange-level incidents. And so, I'll start tracking. If they're, if the orange-level incidents are concentrated in one area, then that maybe, it may trigger in our management plan the need to trap.
Okay.
And so, that way, when we trap, we target right where we're looking at. So, if we see like one orange incident here and one way over here, it's not one coyote typically that's causing the problem. So, if we start seeing a cluster of issues, then we know where the problems are. We can, helps us to target our education. Okay, we're seeing a lot of activity on Naples Island. Let's go canvas Naples Island and get education out. So, we use it, that's how we use it. And then we put it out there for the community to use it, so they can kind of see, make decisions that they want to make for them to have the information.
Okay, thank you. And when we worked on our, our plan, which I think your plan and our plan...
Very similar. The tiered responses are pretty much different.
Yeah, they reflect each other, I think. And I think the one goal that we had, that we really haven't met in that, is to put together a regional approach, so that what you're doing, we're doing, Huntington's doing, Ross Moore's doing, et cetera. And is there any, any news on that front of how to work together as a region better?
I know that I have attended multiple meetings. There's, there's a scientist in UC Irvine, who has held regional meetings that I've attended. There's people from, from all over the region. And one of the interesting things, when I talked about us being ahead of the game, is when they were showing things that you could do to these cities, they were showing our stuff. So, it was like, hey, you can do this, or hey, you can do that. And I was like, hey, I recognize that. That looks very familiar. It's our stuff. So, we're way ahead of where most cities are. But I know they've been doing a lot of data collection. They're actually starting to, I believe, starting to track coyotes and radio collar them, to track them.
Oh, interesting.
So, I believe they're, they're doing that now.
Now, who's they? UCI?
UC Irvine. I believe that they're starting to, or they're working with some scientists that are starting, we're going to actually start doing that in Long Beach this year. We're going to start putting radio collars and tracking coyotes and seeing where they're going. And some of them, we'll see if some of them wander over into Seal Beach.
Oh, I think they stay on your side of the county line.
I don't think they do. I think they kind of go into Lakewood and, and everywhere else, unfortunately. We kind of share that.
I think that's a really interesting approach. So, I'll be glad to see where it goes. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? I had a couple of quick ones. The, you talked about the enforcement of laws and regulations for feeding. How's that working? Have you done any enforcement?
We, we've done some. It's, you know, we really try to keep it to, just educating people and try to get them to, to just understand they're causing a problem. But if we have to, we will start getting into fines and citations.
But have you been...
Trying to remember, in the city of Seal Beach, I can't remember if we were able to do administrative citations for...
Were you notified of people feeding them?
We have gotten a few. We've gotten, that I can remember that have come to my level, like two or three over the last couple of years.
What do you attribute the high numbers in 2014 to? Do you think it's like, you know, weather?
I'm not really sure. I mean, it's, it's been pretty busy in Long Beach this year, for sure. It was, it was on the news. It was everywhere. So, a lot of people were reporting stuff. People were less educated then than they are now. So, I think that's why maybe pets are less likely to be injured, because people are protecting them better than they were in maybe 2013 or 14. So, I think education's played a lot of that.
And the last time you were here, we talked about patrolling the area. How's that going? Are you more visible now?
I told my, I told my team to be visible. I gave them your address. I told them to turn the sirens on. They'd be by your house.
I'll look for them at Gum Grove.
Yeah, definitely look for them. They're supposed to be out patrolling. And I know we've gotten some issues at Gum Grove. And Gum Grove's a tricky situation, because it's up against the wetlands. And dogs off-leash really poses a problem for coyotes and wetlands.
Exactly. And how about your website? Do you have a website?
We do have a website. It's longbeach.gov/ACS.
ACS.
Yeah, just ACS for Animal Care Services.
Longbeach.gov.
Yeah, we're one of the few bureaus that has its own website in Long Beach. Mostly it's just city and the departments. We're just a smaller, barely ever one.
Yeah, I'll look that up.
I want to bounce off of something that you talked about, Mike. Ted, do you think you could work with our PD and find out about that finding? Because we are still having people who are feeding, and we've certainly educated enough. So, I think we're beyond the place where we should be educating and we should start enforcement. So, perhaps you could work with our PD to see what can be done. And if you need to bring something to us as a council, then I think we should do it. But we should at least get the mechanism in place so it can be done.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, we have Mr. Bob?
Hey, good evening. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Bob Schellman. I'm the ecologist at Naval Weapons Station Seal Beach. I've been there for 15 years. And I was asked to be here tonight just to give you an update as to what's going on with coyotes at our, at our station. We continue to take the same approach that Ted was just talking about with the education, education outreach. The term that we use is active coexistence, trying to make sure that we not only are educating the people that are on the base, and that includes our, our service, service members, but also RV park patrons, our residents, on proper activities, keeping, keeping pets on a leash, keeping them on a short leash, not leaving out food and any attractants for coyotes. But then we also do our best to educate the coyotes as well. And in that, we're talking about hazing. If we, if we see coyotes acting in a way that's not a natural activity, if they're getting a little too accustomed to people, we make sure that we remind them that, that we're a lot bigger than they are, and that we can make them uncomfortable too. So, flapping and hazing and making, making sure that they maintain their wild activities. We have a population that continues at about seven to 10 animals on the base. We have 5,000 acres. For those of you, you know, that can look at the maps behind you. But the, we have 5,000 acres. Most of that is open space, which is full of ground squirrels and gophers, which keeps our coyotes very happy. We have lots of food, shelter, and water. We have very healthy, our coyotes are very healthy and, and well-fed. And, and they actually provide a very important ecological value to our installation in that they keep down our rodent population, and they also keep down our, what we call a mesopredator, which are those middle-level predators like raccoons, skunks, opossums, that are actually predators of some of our endangered species that we manage on the base. So, having a, a healthy coyote population is important, is important to us, and it helps manage, keep our ecosystem healthy. One of the things that we, or a couple of things that we're doing on the installation to make sure that our coyotes can stay put as best we can, is we do constant fence checks. As you would imagine, that's a security thing. As you would imagine, that's a security thing as well. But if we see that there are any digs or anything like that that's going on, where coyotes are coming and going, and I think that there's probably as many coyotes that are coming into our abundant food, water and shelter, uh, as they're maybe leaving. But, uh, we, we fill those gaps as much as we can, and that's a security issue as well. We want to, we don't want anything, anything else crawling underneath the fence as well. Um, but then the other thing that we're doing too, is we did a pilot study last year, where we're trying to improve some of our fencing, especially in areas that are near any, uh, residential areas, where we put in an apron, which actually makes it harder for the, um, coyotes to, uh, dig under, dig underneath either way. And, uh, that was very successful. And so now our, uh, Public Works folks have the, kind of the, the tools in the toolbox to make those fence improvements as, as needed, if we see, uh, anything further. And then, uh, another thing that I will add is that we're, I'm excited that we're actually going to start doing a, um, a more robust surveillance program, where, um, we have a couple of trail cams that we can use to try to, um, get a better feel as to how, uh, certain areas are being utilized, if we need, if we need to do that. So we're, we're starting to implement, implement that as well. I think that's pretty much it. Oh, I guess, just to give you an idea of how we keep track of our coyotes, we don't have them, we don't have them collared or tagged or anything like that, but we do monthly, uh, surveys, nighttime surveys, that have been going on for decades. And so we, um, have a, a route that we, we run once a month, um, with big giant lights to kind of drive, drive the site and kind of get a feel as to how many coyotes we have. And so I went back and pulled the numbers over the last year and the average number that we've seen is about four coyotes on a, on a, um, on one of those runs, but we obviously aren't seeing all of them. I mean, they're, they're, they're sneaky and, you know, they get the term wily coyote for a reason, and so we don't always see them. But, um, that's, that's the average, we sometimes see more, sometimes less. But we average it, we, we estimate that we have seven to ten on the installation right now. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Who do you want?
You said your coyotes are healthy. And, um, I know that there was a coyote in front of my house recently this year. And, uh, my brother's a Montana mountain man and, um, he's used to coyotes. And he said this was the oddest coyote he'd ever run into. He said it had no fear of him whatsoever and it was actually challenging him when he was trying to haze it. Can I assume that that's not what you've got on the base?
I, I, I would agree that that is not what we have on the base. And what, what, what I typically see, um, when I see a coyote on the base is usually the hind end of one moving the other direction, they're, they're just.
Which is the normal.
Which is a normal response for a human. But, but it's not just, um, they see cars all the time, so a car going by, they just kind of look at you.
Well, he wasn't in a car.
But I, but it, but I guess my point is if I get out of the car and they recognize that I'm a person.
Uh-huh.
They're, they're gone.
They're gone.
And they, they may turn or look over their shoulder to make sure that I'm not chasing them, but they're, 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 they're going. That's, that's what I consider a normal response. Now, if I have a coyote or something that maybe approaches the vehicle, what that would tell me is that maybe there's somebody that's not following our rules and maybe is flipping them some food or something like that and starting to, getting them acclimated to people. When I see that, or if I were to see that, I can jump out and I can start that hazing. And they, they get the message pretty quick that maybe this is not a good thing.
All right, thank you.
So seven to ten coyotes for five thousand acres?
Yeah. And that's, and that's actually, you know, when, when studies have been done about, uh, home range size, um, you know, it varies from many, many, many acres, like in areas like Montana and things like that, where there's a large home range. But when you get into urban environments and especially in, in, in urban areas like Long Beach, and they've had studies in Chicago and, and these other areas where it's been down to as little as one kilometer, one square kilometer, so very, very small home ranges. And what that means is that those coyotes have found some sort of probably not natural food source, whether they're either eating fallen fruit, or they're eating garbage, or they're eating dog food that's left out for, for, for dogs and cats, whatever, whatever it might be. So they have, they, they, they are very adaptable and they will change their home range based on what they're, what's available.
So you were saying that coyotes kind of go both ways over the fence?
Under, under, yeah, yes.
From Seal Beach onto Naval Weapons Station?
That's correct.
And then they leave, is that?
Yeah, and, and.
Is that how that works? I mean, I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, they're, 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 they're going to go where there's, where there's food. And so if, 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 if they, I, this is me putting my head in, in a coyote's head. If, if, if I find my coyote that's having to dodge traffic, try to scrounge through a trash can and I see that there's all the food, water and resources I need on the other side of the fence, I would probably try that. I can tell you that anecdotally, I can almost always tell which one, which are kind of our resident coyotes, because they're usually, like I say, they're in very good health. And they're often, if I see a scrawny one, it's usually being chased by one of our healthy ones. And I can only assume that that's one that maybe came from somewhere on the riverbed or wherever and is being chased out and by that, by the home range coyote, so.
We have a lot of room over there, I mean. All right, well, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ted? Okay, at this time of the meeting, we'll go into oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda at the council's discretion may be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to five minutes, period. And any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Do we have any public speakers at this time? Come on up.
Please tell me if I'm not loud enough. I probably will scream because I'm afraid of not being loud enough. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members and awesome support people. My name is Clara Wise and I'm a resident of Leisure World Seal Beach. Thank you for allowing me to share this evening. I'm following my friend Mary Trump, who spoke two weeks ago at this, at this meeting, and I'm carrying the same great message that she did. There are several of us at Leisure World who have been attending CCE, Community Choice Energy Seminars during the past year, and we want to share our excitement with you. Community Choice Energy is, is a public-private partnership between city and utility. Purchasing power is under local control. With Community Choice Energy, Southern California Edison would continue to deliver power over their power lines and provide infrastructure and also do the billing for Seal Beach. The downsides of the current system and the benefits of Community Choice Energy are outlined in the flyer that I've provided. It's to be distributed. A few of the many benefits include local control with local jobs and economic development, and CCE is self-supporting and not government subsidized, and CCE provides potential cost savings for the consumer. I am clearly not an expert about details regarding implementing or finances or working with other communities. However, we have in this room some awesome resource people who know the questions to ask and the expertise to sort it through. There are probably other people you know outside the room who work for the city, who also have some expertise and, and would like to participate. One of the next steps is approval of a feasibility study to ensure due diligence on financial costs and long-term benefits for consumers. I am so hoping that you can attend this free event on April eleventh from ten to three at UCI. Registration is required and information about registration is on the flyer. I guarantee, I promise, that one of the most, that this will be one of the most informative and exciting five hours you have ever spent. I mean that. All of the cities in Orange County were invited and some have not responded. If Seal Beach has not responded, I ask and I hope that you would respond quickly. I hope to learn with you and from you at the event at UCI. Several of us at Leisure World will be volunteering there and look forward to seeing you. Thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Next. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council, city staff and the public. Seth Hekker, a pleasure to be before you once again. Um, I wanted to thank you, I've been out of town a bit, so I wanted to thank all of you who attended to the wonderful Cypress College Americana Awards. I know, you know, many of you commented on it at the last council meeting, I saw it in the minutes. Thank you very much, thank you for the staff who attended. Um, it really was a spectacular event and, uh, we appreciate the support of the college. Also, I really wanted to thank all the individuals, businesses, candidates, and Karen hasn't left, members of the Royal Court. Um, and I'm proud to announce Jeff King and Wendy Close as King and Queen of Hearts from Leif's Annual Fundraiser. And for those of you who don't know, it raised over two hundred thousand dollars over the campaign. And in the last five years, I'm proud to say it's over six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which has gone directly to support the entire Bosalmeiras Unified School District. I did want to also comment on item H on the agenda purely as a citizen, that I think it's really great to see the city taking care of a piece of property and real estate that is of high potential value. As someone who spent ten years in the restaurant industry and is a business consultant, I think that's a jewel of a property. And it's good to see that the city's investing in that. I think we know that at some point, hopefully down the road, that beautiful park will go in and those homes will be built and creating another destination location there. And, um, your support of that is spectacular. And I'm really glad to see that as a business advocate. I also wanted to, um, comment a little bit about our police department. I had the pleasure of being on several ride-alongs over the course of the last sixty days. And, uh, including what day is today, Monday, yesterday? And, uh, I just want to amplify to the community, to council, to staff and really our citizens, we have a remarkable police department. Uh, we have a remarkable police department because they really care about our town and we have highly qualified officers at all levels. And it's been really interesting as a citizen to see the evolution of the quality of officers that we're attracting from other communities. And I want to thank council for this, because, it is because we have healthy reserves and because we're approaching this in an economically feasible way, that I believe many of these officers are coming towards us who are highly qualified. Because other cities can't provide the same level of confidence and guarantee that we can in Seal Beach. So I know you might be surprised to hear that coming out of my mouth, but thank you for that, because I've heard that directly from police officers. The other thing I would say is, are, as citizens, I would encourage all of us to take active steps to support our police. Active steps are things like, if you suspect something is weird, don't just wait. Like I was riding along and we were in College Park West and a guy came out of his house, was talking, was talking about suspicious, suspicious behavior and observations. And the very first question is, did you call it in? Oh, no. How many times have you seen it? Fifteen? Wha, wha, why didn't you call? Oh, we didn't want to bother you. Please bother the police department. I think that's why they're there, because we want to be able to track and identify this. And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we want to not report anything that's suspicious. Also, lock your cars, um, bring in packages, ask your neighbor to bring in packages if you're going to be gone for a little while. We're a friendly community, I'm sure your neighbors will do that. And close your garage doors, please, in all parts of our community. Garage doors are just open invitations to people, um, to just walk in. And, um, that, that's really important. The last thing I wanted to do was just very quickly run through just a few items that the Lions Club has been doing just in the last two months. How much time do I have?
You have forty-three seconds.
Okay, thank you. So just this month, we did the MD4 Convention in San Diego, Cypress College Americana Awards, a CLFIS site screening at Grand Terrace. We visited Grand Terrace Lions Club, we had a Leo District Ronald McDonald House Dinner. We went to Chapman University, we did the McGaw Family Fun Night. We did a beach cleanup, we would do the Lions Chili Cook-Off and Pinewood Derby. We did another CLFIS screening in Riverside. We did the Queen and Queen of Hearts Ball. We did a talent contest for the Leos the same day, the Cub Scout Pinewood Derby yesterday. And then, um, we have the Lag Team, which did thirty-eight cleanup areas of graffiti just this last month.
Very well done.
And we have another fifteen projects in the next two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Um, I want to follow up on the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of two thousand and eighteen initiative that I spoke about at the last city council meeting. Um, unfortunately, I strayed from the teleprompter and ran out of time and was gone from the podium. So I want to spend a little bit more time on the initiative itself. Um, at the last meeting, I gave a recap on AB one oh nine and on propositions forty-seven and fifty-seven. And, um, if you missed that, uh, there's a plethora of information on the internet, you can just look it up, it's, it's readily available. And likewise, there's plenty of information on the internet on the, uh, Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of two thousand and eighteen. Um, you can also go on keepcalsafe.org, uh, and, uh, you'll learn a lot more about the, about the initiative. Um, th, this initiative is to help, uh, correct some of the negative unintended consequences of AB one oh nine and props forty-seven and fifty-seven. And, and this is basically what the initiative is going to do. Um, one, it'll reclassify currently non-violent crimes like rape of an unconscious person and sex trafficking of a child as violent, and to prevent the early release of inmates convicted of these crimes. Second, it will reform the parole system to stop the early release of violent felons, expand parolee oversight and strengthen penalties for parole violations. And then third, it will reform theft laws to restore accountability for serial thieves and organized, uh, uh, theft gangs. That, right now, if somebody steals something less than nine hundred and fifty dollars, it's considered a misdemeanor, a ticket, and they're on the, they're out on the street, they can go from, from shop to shop to shop, as long as they stay under nine hundred and fifty dollars, it doesn't become a felony. So tho, those are the serial thefts that we, that we want to correct, that were, that were left out. And then fourth, uh, we want to expand the DNA collection to include those convicted of drug theft, domestic violence and other serious crimes, uh, to help, uh, solve rapes, murders and other, other crimes of that nature. Now, we, we have an outstanding police department, I think everybody will agree with that. And they're doing everything they can to keep our city safe, uh, safe for us. Um, we need to help the police by getting behind this initiative so we can get the proposition on the ballot in November two thousand and eighteen, so people can vote for that and get some of the tools that the police lost with AB one oh nine, props forty-seven and fifty-seven, and, uh, let them be able to go out and do their jobs. So, uh, make sure that when you have the opportunity to sign the petition, they'll be at different, uh, places at markets and things like that over the next month or two. And make sure that you go up and that you, you know what it's about, and you can sign the, the petition. I know a lot of times we see people, uh, signing things up, you don't know anything about it. And that was one of the reasons I wanted to come here, to talk to not only the city council, but all the people that are watching, uh, on, uh, on TV and on the internet, uh, so that they're aware of it. You don't have to, you're yet educated, you can, if you see the, this place to sign up, you've already gone on the internet, you know about it, you can go ahead and, and sign, sign up, so. Um, and I also hope that the city, um, if they haven't already, is investigating this and that they get behind, uh, this initiative with all the other cities in California, uh, so that, uh, it's going to help make our city a lot safer and it'll give the police, uh, officers the tools to do their job. Thank you. Thank you.
Joyce Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. And at the last meeting, um, there was, um, something brought up, I brought up about the Seal Beach Redevelopment Agency and, um, some funds that are in here that I don't understand why they're in here. in here. Seventh Street Alley, TCH2 Marina, Seventh Street. Why is the Seventh Street Alley in the successor Seal Beach Redevelopment Agency? So I'm going through some of the projections of what you're going to do and what you've done. And the Finance Director recommended to the City Council new revenue sources up to and including a new ballot measure. What's a new ballot measure? How are you going to do that without taxpayers voting for it? Because they did a parking authority. So we won't get a vote on it. So Mayor Poppa, I'm asking you to really, and the two new City Council people, don't do it, because it's going to be a heavy debt for you to get by for the next four years. How do you think they're going to finish that pier? And how do you think they're going to finish and put all that money into Rivers Inn? I mean, they're already sitting over there on the jetty, watching, watching the guy move out. They're just waiting, just like they were waiting for the other pier to go. They never did what was required so that they could be put out. A new ballot measure. So that means they're going to try to talk you into making a real, probably a couple million dollars, or maybe more to finish that pier. Who knows? Don't do it. The three of you, don't do it. Okay, and the employees' wellness program, healthy lifestyles, offering for employees. I mean, you know, most people have to pay for their own insurance out there, Main Street business people, they have to pay for their own insurance. And the Main Street, I know Seth, you do good, but so many U-turns on Main Street, and nobody ever gets a ticket. I don't see any cops on Main Street. And people walk, and they don't really look to make sure that you're not going to hit them or anything. They just walk out. And you've got large trucks coming into town, and they're taking up whole blocks to park. They're getting larger and larger, the trucks. And even large trucks park on Main Street, and the rear end is sticking out. So what do you do? You've got one over here sticking out, and you've got one over here making U-turns, and you can't do anything. And Main Street is not what it used to be. We have vacancies, they're having a hard time over there. And you know, the way to make money is not to, like I've heard now, that we're going to start signing people $500 if you put an open house sign up. They're giving tickets down at the beach parking lot if you get too close to the white line. If you get too close to the white line, you're going to get a ticket? Well, if I can't give you a ticket, I'll give you a ticket for a broken window. Is that what we're down to now? Is it collecting money any way you can? We've got a $40 million budget. Where's the money going? And how much, where was the budget when you first came, City Manager? I don't remember it being, but maybe $30 million. So now we're up to $40. But I'm just telling you, this is an election year, they're going to try to pump you to vote for the parking authority, to get money, not to put a parking place up that we need, like the village has, but they're going to get it to finish that pier. And what do they really want it for? They want it for the other vacant restaurant down at Rivers Inn. And that guy, it sat there vacant for so many years, and he'd been there for so many years, and now they're going to pour all that money into it, and believe me, it's already graffiti down there on the doors. So what is this? Another fire, another fire coming and more money.
Your time's up.
Oh, I can't talk about the code. I can't talk about it.
Next time.
Next time, talk about having the code brought up so that people can do what they need to do.
Thank you.
Good evening. Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to speak tonight about two items that are on the agenda. Item A, which is the review of the strategic objectives, and Item G, which is the Thailand's lease agreement. Let me start with the Thailand's lease agreement. This is an issue that's been, it's been an issue for over a year, I believe. And the first agreement that was presented to us by staff really had a lot of problems, including a $65,000 a year payment, which was new. And I just want to give kudos to staff for renegotiating much, much better terms. I'm not going to go through them all, but the terms are much better. The $65,000 is now something less than $1,000 a year. And so this is much improved. And I also want to give thanks to Councilwoman Deaton, because I think, I may be wrong, but my recollection is that you really provide the leadership on saying no, especially on the $65,000 issue.
I'm really good at saying no.
Well, I was surprised that the State Lands Commission voted on this one, honestly. So you get credit for that, and it's well deserved. And staff worked on, there were many other issues that staff worked on, and they deserve credit on that also. Changing items regarding the objectives, I had questions on four of the objectives. The first one was on Page C, which has to do with infrastructure, specifically Number Four, which is to present to City Council for prioritization and direction the storm order master plan improvements. My question slash concern about that is, on tonight's agenda, it's on the consent calendar, is request to approve a design contract for three projects, three storm order projects that you previously approved in June as part of the budget, the capital improvement project Nothing surprising about the staff report. The staff report is fine, et cetera. But at the end of the staff report, it says that this agenda item satisfies the goal I just mentioned, the goal being to have, what I thought this goal was, was to have an open discussion of all the projects in the master plan and to discuss prioritization of them. I don't think this staff report satisfies this goal, so I disagree with staff that this goal has been done, that you can put a check in that box. It is an important, excuse me, it is an important goal, and perhaps it should be deferred until we learn more from these design studies and the input we'll get from AKM. But I wouldn't put a check mark in the Dunbox on that one. Then on Page E, which is the last page, Enhance Public Safety, there's three goals at the end, Three, Four, and Five. And I don't know if we've ever had any follow-up discussion on during the monthly presentations. And these all involve training, police-related training. The first one is Emergency Operations Center training. The next one is CPR training at McGaw Elementary School. And then the report to the City Manager regarding a new summer lifeguard deployment plan. Now, this goal period, these goals were supposed to be done by March 1st, which is Thursday. And so I would ask that when the City Manager reviews this with you all and with the public tonight, that we get some detail regarding whether these three goals are going to be done by Wednesday or not.
You have one minute.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll move to the next item, which is the City Attorney's Report.
No reports tonight, Mayor.
City Manager's Report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I actually have two items, but I'm, Councilwoman Deaton has indicated she'd like to take one of those, so I'm going to defer to her on one of those. I did send the council a really exciting email late this afternoon. It was prior to the council meeting, and I know she saw it because she mentioned it to me. So I'm going to defer on that exciting news and let her share that. And the second piece of information I wanted to share, which is really exciting news and kudos go to our staff, I'd like to commend Crystal Landavazo, our interim Community Development Director, as well as Vicky Beetley, our Finance Director. As the council knows, we apply for community development block grant funding on two-year cycles, and we received notification today that we've been preliminarily approved for continued CDBG funding for both the 2018-19 and 2019 fiscal years. I know that Councilwoman Masalabat will be excited to hear that, because we received our full $180,000 annual funding for that project. And with this declaration, totals 15 years and approximately $2.7 million. It's been reinvested in our community specifically to the Leisure World Bathroom Rehabilitation Programs. I think it's really exciting news. Wanted to share that tonight, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll do the council comments, general council member comments, and reporting pursuant to AB 1, 2, 3, 4. Start at the end with Sandra, please.
I do have a couple of comments. There's an organization in Leisure World called the Sunshine Club. They meet every Friday morning, and there's usually anywhere around 100 people that go there. And it is information. We have guest speakers from all over, every subject you could possibly think of. And it is so popular, we're booked a year in advance. So if any of you have something really interesting you want to talk about, the woman who runs it, you've got to call her and ask her if she's available next year for a date. So it's really, really popular. And what I did last, one of the comments I made, when I'm there, I give a City Council kind of a report, because they're always asking me questions. So this week, I spent a lot of time talking about the police department and how great they are. And what a good job they do and how conscientious they are. And I just must have carried on for about 10 minutes. And they were just all going, yeah, yeah, yeah. And so it was a well-received comment, and they all agreed with me that you guys are number one. And thank you very much. Now, the other thing I want to talk about. At the last meeting, when I wasn't here, I was watching it on TV, so you can't get away with anything. There was a comment made during our all communications about Leisure World not paying its water bill, I think it was, or not being charged enough for their water bill. Well, you know, when somebody says something negative about Leisure World, I'm up and at them. And Leisure World pays nearly $2 million a year for water, somewhere around $1 million and a half, give or take. You know, that's a lot of money to pay for water. We pay our bill. I want you to know that. And there was an implication also that we don't pay our taxes, enough property tax. We pay the same rate that everyone else pays. It's not any different. Our homes are a little cheaper, although some of them are for half a million and up now. And, you know, for 1,200 square feet, a half million's a lot of money. And they pay their fair share when it's reassessed. So I want the city and the people in Seal Beach to know that Leisure World, which is a fully one-third of the population of this community, pays its way. And the city, on top of that, doesn't have to pay for the streets inside, doesn't have to pay for electricity, doesn't have to pay for signs, doesn't have to pay for landscaping. It's, we all pay for it, the people who live there. So I think Seal Beach is getting a really good bang for its buck with Leisure World being in the community. And that's what I really wanted to say. So be careful what you say. Back it up with honest and good information, or you'll have me to deal with.
Well, thank you for that. Councilmembers, to start, say?
I have nothing to report.
Mayor Proton Deen?
Yes, hi. I have a few things. I just wanted to mention that we went to the Friends of the Mary Wilson Library event yesterday, and I just wanted to say that the Seal Beach Moms had all gotten together and were all there, and it was, it was just so fun to see all those little children there. They were so excited, and the man was so good with them with magic and animals. It was great. So if you don't belong to Friends of the Library, now's your chance. $15 for a whole year, and it helps to provide children's programs. So I also want to talk a little bit about an ad hoc committee that Sandra and I are on as council members. It's the Fire Ad hoc. I want to thank Vicky for the great financial overview that you gave us at the last meeting. I want to thank Chief Acosta for the great service overview that you gave us at the last meeting. And I want to make sure that everyone knows that what we will be having now is a presentation from both Huntington Beach, Long Beach, and OCFA to help us formulate recommendations on where we should go forward with our fire. Everyone is invited to attend, and if you are interested in public safety in our town, you should be there, because these are big decisions. We are having a very, very difficult time keeping up with the cost of living on the increases in public safety, so I really urge you to come and be a part of the solution. The next thing that I would like to say is that, thank you, Joe, for letting me tell the news, that Ocean Place, formerly known as the DWB Property, has received its coastal development permit. I think it was, what, 17 days to go before another extension, they finally got their permit. So just to give you a little background on it, it was approved by the Coastal Commission in March of 2015, and three years later, the staff issued permits. So we're ready to go on that project. I would like to make a comment about the State Lands. Thank you, Robert, for mentioning my Just Say No moment. The State Lands has been wonderful to work with. A lot of times, I do my rant on the loss of local control and how the state is running our life, but I have to say that Grace Cato and her team have been really good to work with. I want to thank our team here in Seal Beach that worked with them, and thank Craig for the legal work you've done on it, because if I'm not mistaken, it's $150 a year on that lease. So...
$125.
Oh.
$125.
I was mistaken. $125. And I think I made the comment on our phone call with the state, something to the effect of $125 is the new dollar a year lease. So anyway, we made great progress because they were really reasonable, and they wanted only the best for the State Lands, and they understood that we were doing the best that we could to maintain the State Lands. And so it was a great working relationship. So I thank the staff, and I thank State Lands as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you. On that note, I'd like to give kudos to the staff for that, too. I think that's, how many years did we get for that? 29 years? Have I read that correctly? 29 more years. So 29 more years at $125 is a substantial savings in the long run. And I attended a number of events last month. I'm trying to figure out how I figured, put all this time in the day here, but I attended the ACCOC City Leaders Reception last week. It was well-attended by many other council members and mayors and assemblymen. I went to the Michelle Steele, Supervisor Michelle Steele, Mayor's Breakfast, and that was very informative. We talked about a lot of the common things that we all see in our city. We talked about a lot of the common things that we all see in our city, beach trash, homelessness, public safety, and so on. It's very informative and very good to talk to the other mayors and mayor protems to kind of get ideas from. I also went to the McGaw School Fun Night, Lions Club, did a great job, as well as the PTA and the school staff. It's always fun to attend those with my kids because they get a lot of candy and chocolate and stuff and they run around like crazy. Right after that, I ran over, literally ran by myself to the Leif fundraiser at McDonald's and that was fun, watching all the Leif volunteers work at McDonald's because it was really busy and they were really busy. And lastly, I attended the Friends of the Library, too, and the animal magic show was really enjoyable to watch. I know my daughters got a kick out of it and they got to go, not on stage, but up front and participate. Which kind of brought me up to this newsletter, just a kind of quick shout-out. I got this online and it kind of shows the things that are going on in a highlighted version. It shows the magic show that's going on. It shows some of the projects that are going on, the annual tree planting program and concrete replacement on Main Street, which is very important. I see that every Saturday and Sunday morning when I do my walks and the sewer repair projects and the Adolfo Lopez Drive restructuring. So it's a good source of just getting some highlights. If you get a chance, it's on the city website. I believe it's bimonthly?
Biweekly.
Biweekly on that. So it's a good source of just quick information. So that's all I had and I think we'll move to the next item, which is the council items. Item A, City of Seal Beach Strategic Plan.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So just have a quick summary tonight. As the council knows, we met back in October of 2017 to draft our next six-month objectives. And I say six months because it's really only four months because we're meeting next week on Wednesday, March 7th, at 8:00 AM at Old Ranch to talk about where we've been over the last four months. And with that, I want to say, you know, it's been, the council's very good about recognizing the work effort of staff, but I really want to give our staff team the kudos on this because as you can see as you walk through this document, and I review it with you on a monthly basis, we're getting a significant amount of work done. And I think it's important for the public to realize, this isn't, you know, this isn't a product for us to say whether your staff failed or we passed. This is a work plan that this council has committed to alongside our staff team to plan for our community's future. It's a really important document. It's not meant to be punitive to staff. It's meant to be, this is what our council and staff believes is our plan for the future and six-month objectives that will help us get there. And so I think it's important to say that and if there's members of the public, whether they're commending us or criticizing us, I would encourage them to come out and participate. Come, take the time and spend a half a day with us, a full day with us, and learn what strategic planning really is and how we're using it in this city to move this community forward and be successful. So what I thought tonight was, because this is the last time and I did a pretty thorough review last month, is just hit a couple of high points. And then if there's any questions from council, I'll be happy to address those. I think first of all, on attachment A, page A, I think we've covered Councilwoman Deaton on the tidings lease agreement. And as all of you know, that's on the agenda tonight. And also, I know Councilmember Massalabat was part of that effort, along with several of our team, staff team members as well. So really excited to see that one come to fruition on behalf of our community. I think the other two items, the goal, item number two, or objective number two on securing outside agency permits for the pier construction project is significant. And then you'll notice item number five, which is presenting plans and specs and cost estimates for our pier construction project, although it's past this next review date of March 1st. And we will, we are working on that to bring to you at the March 12th council meeting for your consideration. And as you know, you have an item on your agenda tonight that has to do with approving the RFP so that we can go out to bid for the construction and management services for the pier project. So that's it for that page in terms of, because I really thought it was important to highlight what was most significant, especially over these last four months. I'll turn your attention then to page E in terms of objective number one, presenting to the council, as all of you know, the council did approve to increase staffing by two police officers for our police department. So that action is moving forward. Really significant effort and truly appreciate the council's support in this effort moving forward. I will highlight on objective number three, our entire staff team is facilitating a citywide EOC training exercise tomorrow. So that will take place a half-day tomorrow. So like I said, really important, I thought it was important to highlight most specifically the effort that's been done on the pier as well as the state lands commission lease agreement and then what's been done in public safety. And as you'll notice on status, although as I said before, this isn't pass or fail. It's basically to give you an idea of where we're at in progress moving forward. You'll see in the comment section, there's several of those that are in progress that staff will continue to work on. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions from council?
No.
Just thank you for your work and pushing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, we have consent calendar items. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by city council members. All of them, except item E, which was pulled by Councilmember Sarsik. Would you like to make a motion?
Some of...
Second.
Please vote. 4-0 passes, thank you. So we'll go to item E. Do you have to report on that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll turn this item over initially to our Public Works Director, Steve Meider.
Yes, thank you, City Manager, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. Tonight represents a major milestone in the, our goals and objectives. This whole project started from last year based on, we have $100 million worth of unfunded storm drain improvements in our CIP right now, based on the 2008 master plan. The question is, and of course, we had a record rain, so we had an opportunity to firsthand observe the challenges in front of us. So the question, and this is always a very big challenge for small cities like us, is you have this large improvement and you have a system that's fairly well-dated. So how do you move forward and then take, make sure every dollar spent gets the maximum benefit? So that takes this $100 million project, which of course is not affordable. We start looking at how do we phase this? Because the master plan established this budget. How do we phase the projects in such a way that we can just make sure we get the maximum benefit and build them in such a way that we can afford them? You know, basically phase it to affordable pieces. So what you're seeing tonight is a lot of work from last year and a lot of observations and working with AKM, who also created our master plan, to help focus in on what projects would do the best, would give us the best benefit at the least cost and start working on this $100 million overall project so we can phase it and start budgeting over the next 10 years in some kind of, you know, two, three, I don't know what the phases are going to look like yet. That's what the goal of these projects are. So what you're seeing tonight is what staff believes are the most important areas where we can do the most benefit to our community and also phase them in such a way that we can afford them over the next 10 years. So it won't be the whole $100 million, but it will start the basis. So everything builds on, these phases will build on each other and we're just trying to pick the most critical places at this point and that's what this does. So what's going to happen is we're going to perform, there's a Seal, end of Seal Way, there's a proposed design. Because the question, why are we not doing a focused study there? There is no, there's only one option. We've already looked at this. There's one option. So we will do the unnecessary, we'll do the necessary investigations, come up with a design, come up with a very detailed, high-level confidence budget. This is what it costs to improve this. Now, this area at the end of Seal Way, Seal Beach Boulevard, what's happening is it drains and then if we happen to get a storm by a high tide, it shuts down. There's nowhere for the water to go and there's a pump station right there. So the simple solution would be to, oh, well, just go build a pipe and go over there. But the problem is, you would create this, you'd be basically pumping seawater. And that's why that solution's never been done. There's a, there's another way approach, which is a little more challenging and that's what we had to bring, we got to get water from that intersection into the upstream pipe to the pump station and that will solve the problem.
Interesting.
And then also rebuild the out, the outfall on that small pipe that drains the end between, it basically drains the end of Electric Avenue. It's broken, so we need to fix that and we need to get a new outfall and this project will address that. That's why we're able to go right to the design. Now, the other ones are much more challenging. Our sump condition at Marina, Marina Drive, there's a sump condition there, which means it's a low point in the city. And we know this because we put a pump there. That's one place that a pump is actually doing some good. And that whole flow, that whole, what we call watershed area, which means it's essentially a small shallow bowl. So what can we do? We know we have a pump station and I know this firsthand. The pump station we have is not receiving all the water it can pump so that we have capacity there. The problem is we got to get the water there. And then, so the water's obviously pooled, it's obviously being retained in upstream of the system, Marina Drive. So how do we get to there? And it's not, it's a simple, you think about it, from a master plan standpoint, it's pretty simple. Why is it going to get the water over to here? What we're trying to do is figure out how to phase it because the challenge is, these systems, we have to build these pipelines, which are essentially big concrete boxes, they have no flexibility, they're shallow. You can't, if you hit a utility, you have to move the utility. So if you go out there without all the pothole information, we might even have to radar the street to figure out where every utility is, get a high level of confidence on what will work, because the last thing we want to do is price it out, get out there, and then there's a surprise and you cannot just go a different direction with these concrete boxes. You're fixed. So you can end up with hundreds of thousands of dollars of change orders if you don't know exactly what's in front of you. Or you won't get the benefit of the project, which is, either way is unacceptable. So these, what they're going, we're going to do is look at a very leveled, high-level detail, look at what's possible. So we'll take a step back and just throw some ideas out on a table with a lot of experience, not rule any concept out, try to figure out how to get more water there at the least cost possible. This is also true with College Park East. That's another very firsthand, it's like, wow. So there's some challenges there. And we, you know, we have Zaki, who's been with us for now. I, Zaki, Zaki is in the audience, by the way. Zaki Karan is right over in the back row and he's president of AKM and he's been doing all our storm drain work for, I want to say 15 years. Is that a, pretty close? 20. So we have some very talented, knowledgeable people working on this. I think we can come up with some very creative phased approaches. We're looking for the most cost-effective way. Obviously, $100 million would be great, keep the whole city protected at 25 years, but that's probably going to be many, many years in the future. So you got to start somewhere. So this will be our roadmap to move forward. Is that, answered your question? That's kind of my presentation, so.
I appreciate that. Part of my question was, had there been a reprioritization or where were we kind of going with this? And that did answer that. But as I, as I read this, it seems a little bleak to me because it was talking about shallow collection and all these utility lines and I was, and I was feeling like, are, will we get, we'll spend a lot of money, but will we get something or, you know?
Yes, yes. The answer is yes. We will get, we will be as cost-effective as possible and phase these projects in such a way that they are affordable. So, but it may take many years, but you got to build on, you want the projects to build on each other.
So are we looking at a phased approach then or bits? Okay, so trying to take the most productive little bits and...
And in my, you know, I will put more wording in the goals and objectives and of course, an strategic plan. It's actually, within this goal, there's three sub-goals. We've already accomplished the first one, which is taking $100 million and where should we invest to drill down and go to the next level? And you're now seeing the results of what we believe, based on many years of experience, where we think we can get the best bang for the buck, to be, you know, to be frank. The next goal is to get, to work out scopes and award the project, recommend award. So that's tonight. Then the third phase is, this is going to create more phases and more decisions, which we're coming back to council. So that would finish the goal. So that would be the last part of the goal, is to take what we learn here and essentially present it to council and say, this is what we believe would be the appropriate phasing and priorities and costs. So what I want to do is bring to council a high confidence of cost. The master planning costs are very high level and we just, it's very high level. It has no utility research and utilities can really wreck your day when you're building a storm drain. So that's why it's important that we do this next step before we come to council and say, okay, over the next 10 years, I, I'm going to go to numbers out right now, but when I give you a number, we know that number, we can hit it. We're not going to put a number out there and find out there's some surprise in the ground. And I used to, I spent six years in Long Beach building deep sewer lines and I found stuff I couldn't believe. So, and the prices goes up. I mean, you've got to do the homework upfront, make sure you have a high level of confidence because when you're, you're building structures that are gravity and you run into things, the cost just can, you can't contain the cost. It just, you don't want that to happen. So that's kind of what we're trying to do here. So that's kind of the next step of our, of the goal is, this is a major step. The last step is bringing the findings back to council and we'll have, have some recommendations on priorities. Again, with the idea of what's the best approach to get, to get us, to get the communities the best, the most effective drainage at the least cost and it can accommodate future extensions so we don't box ourselves in, too.
Thank you.
I had a question, too. When we talked about Marina Drive, we talked about the east end, the west end, middle end?
We're talking about Marina Drive, I want to use the, what, the intersection at the hotel and the flower shop. I spent some time there last rainstorm. So that one floods very quickly and it's a severe sump, so we need to address that.
Yeah, and when I read this, I, I literally underlined this agenda item satisfies that goal. So, you know, I was kind of curious about the prioritization. And I remember when the rains hit a couple of years ago, because we were all wet in here, but it was, these three areas were the high, highly contentious issues and people were just adamant that something be done about, you know, Seal Way, for example, was, you know, brought up over and over again. Marina Drive was brought up over and over again and Talis Park West, or East, I'm sorry, was brought up over and over again. And, and it was, you know, I mean, I couldn't understand why these, some of these weren't done 25 years ago when the costs were a lot less, you know? But anyway, that's a different story in a different time. But, you know, I think the goals are living documents, so, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if these goals or a different phase of the goal gets put on it next month when we meet again because it is evolving and changing and growing. And I'm just glad that something's, you know, getting done because it's been so long. And how long have we been pumping at Seal Way? I mean, really, I mean...
Yeah, and we have a...
Longer than any of us have been, you know, around town, for that matter.
Of the three projects, that's the one that has the most straightforward...
Right, I know. I understand that. And that's, that's why I'm so baffled that it wasn't done 25 or 35 years ago when, you know, it could have been done a lot cheaper, but, you know, I, you know, I don't know further comments, but thanks. you know, I don't know further comments, but thanks for the input.
As we go toward the same year, we're building Marina, just to build on that. That's the other problem area, of course, as you go down toward First Street, you have that pipeline that picks up that flow, and it heads off to the river. The problem, of course, is that's susceptible to heights, to tides, and it's also under capacity, so we're going to look at that whole area as a system, and see what we can do to relieve that as well, so it's going to be an interesting, it's going to be fun.
I'm done, thank you.
Are you going to be looking at the north side of Electric? Is that, is that the part you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the St. Gabriel River, or at the other end now.
No, I, I'm sorry, you know, right across the street and down, I think it was maybe Eighth Street and Seventh Street on the north side were completely underwater. I mean, nobody could even get through there. So there was, there was the flower shop and the hotel on the, on the south side, and then on the north side, there's the other.
If it, if it, in my mind, I don't know where the boundary is, I'm sure Zaki probably does. If it's in the watershed, yes. If it's on the other watershed, which I doubt it, but what you're saying, it kind of...
It's the Seventh and Eighth Street is where it was on the north side, and...
It's definitely in the area we're going to be looking at, and the way you're describing it, chances are it is in the watershed, therefore it'd be studied.
Okay. I, I think it's important to do all of that at once, because it's all in the same, we're drowning there. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a recommendation. Does anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second. Please vote. Four zero, passes. Thank you. There's no public hearing items. We do have some unfinished business. Approved request for proposals for construction management services for the Seal Beach Pier Improvement Project Number BP 1002. Will you have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to turn this item over to David Spitz, our Associate Engineer. David?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council. So the item before you is a request of the City Council to approve a request for proposals for construction management services for the project we're titling the Seal Beach Pier Upgrade Projects, Number BP 1002. I would like to actually use this opportunity with this staff item to update the council on the status of the pier project as a whole. I think it's been a couple of meetings since we've been back here updating you, so this is a great opportunity, especially considering we've been able to narrow down very significantly the timeline and the, and the action items coming forward to you, that you'll either see at council items or, or they'll be taking place very soon. The upcoming tasks, this is the first thing. As we stated today, we're bringing a request for proposals for construction management services. We, we titled CM services a lot in this report, you'll see that. One of the upcoming items that we'll bring before council is a request to approve plans and specifications and cost estimates for bringing the project out to bid. And I'll show you all the timelines on all this in just a moment. There'll be a construction contract award forthcoming, and then after the award of the construction contract, there'll be two notices to proceed. One for procurement of what we call long-lead items, things like pumps for a pump station and the decking, and then eventually, construction. The first of the two items, this is the main action item of this staff report, is a request for approval of a request for proposals for construction management services. This is going to be a very complex, very difficult construction project, updating the pier between all the utility upgrades, the pump station at the end, electrical, all-new electrical work, all-new conduit, sewer line, water, firewater line, and all this, underdecking structural repairs, it's going to be pretty complex, especially for staff to try and handle the entire project management and inspection in-house. So what we'd like to do is solicit proposals from qualified construction management firms to be able to assist with things like inspection, actually, I shouldn't say assist, to take over the inspection, coordinate with city personnel, all outside agencies that have issued us permits, all utility companies that have stakes, that have a stake in some of the utility lines on this pier. They'll assist and manage with document management, and then assist with the construction award, material procurement, invoicing, and project closeout eventually. So we anticipate hiring a firm that can handle all of this, kind of like a turnkey system to work with staff, to make sure that this project runs very smoothly and effortlessly once it begins. As for the timeline for moving here on out, the first item in February of 2018, the month we're in right now, is the request that's before you, Proposals for Construction Management Services. We anticipate in March coming forward to council to approve the plans and specifications for the actual project. We are right there at the finish line on the designs, ready to bring it to council, so you can look at all the items of construction and all the cost estimates that the design engineers have put together for us. We anticipate bringing that, as the city managers mentioned, to the next council meeting on March 12. To go hand-in-hand with the solicitor proposals for the construction management services, in April, staff anticipates bringing before council an item, bringing a request for award of a construction contract to council in May. And I'll go over all this one more time, I've got some pretty graphs and charts to show you. But once awarded, after a week or two to put together all the construction documents, bonds, things like that, we would issue the first notice to proceed to the contractor. This would be for what we call material procurement. Some of the items take many months to secure and deliver to the city, so we would issue the permit for the contractor to start that process right away, so that those long-lead item materials are on-site during construction, and they can be installed and implemented seamlessly with the timeline of the construction project. Which, we still anticipate the major construction to begin September of 2018. We would issue a notice to proceed to the contractor to mobilize pretty much the day after Labor Day. And, and I have it in bold, because that is a timeline, and I'll show this again, but that is a timeline that's been directed to us by the Coastal Commission. They will not allow construction before that, basically what they call the summer months between Memorial Day and Labor Day, there's no construction in the coastal zone. So if we are able to begin this, which we anticipate in September 2018, we would anticipate completing construction by May of 2019. It's a nine-month window we have between those two holidays to finish this. It's an aggressive schedule, but with help from a construction management firm and staff fully behind this project pushing it forward, we believe we can get this done. So, out of the two items I said, the construction management is the first item, this is kind of a graphical representation of the milestones for this project. I apologize if it's a little tough to read, we have a lot of detail on the sheet, but the milestone today, as you can see marked by the diamond, would be the RFP, the Request for Proposal for Construction Management Services. And then, oh, I have a, I have a pointer that works. This is, this item right here is when we, the proposals would be due, at about end of March, beginning of April. Staff would then review the proposals, we would probably interview the highest ranking firms in an entire selection process, and then we would bring it back to council with a request to award by the end of April. The timeline's pretty important, because we would want the construction management firm onboard for the award of the construction contract itself, so that they can assist with the awarding process. And then, the entire phase that we would utilize the construction management firm would be from, in essence, when they sign the agreement, or from award of a construction contract, all the way through project closeout and final paperwork. So that's the timeline for a construction management firm onboard with the city. This is the actual construction timeline. Again, we anticipate in March bringing the plans and specifications to council with a request to approving and authorize this staff to go out to bid. Through the bidding process, eventually bids open, and we would recommend an award to the lowest bidder, that would be second council meeting in May is our anticipated date. And these two milestones show when we would issue the first notice to proceed for material procurement, and this milestone, which is right after the purple-colored months, which would be right after Labor Day, September 4, which would be when we would anticipate starting construction. And again, we put a note, I just wanted to show you a graphical representation, that the months of June, July, August, between Memorial Day and Labor Day are the months that Coastal Commission, per their permit to the city, does not allow construction in the, in the area. And they, even when we are in construction, there's a lot of clauses and requirements that they have for us that will follow. But definitely during these months, they do not allow construction at all, so we have a nine-month window to finish construction and have it ready for Memorial Weekend of That concludes my presentation. Just a reminder, the item before you is for approval of the request for proposals for the construction management services. And we're open for questions.
Any questions from the council?
I guess it's a little frustrating that it's still taking so long to do. People ask us all the time, when are you going to get started on the pier? So this timeline is on, will be online on our website?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I can just refer them, and they can take a look at how difficult it is, and time-consuming everything is. But, you know, the actual work from September to May, that's not, it doesn't seem to me like it's all that long, compared to where we've been and where we're getting to.
We're excited. The light's at the end of the tunnel here, it's coming up pretty quickly, it'll be here before we know it.
Yeah. It is exciting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was just going to ask, on a, you get the, what, the notice of completion or something that, that marks the project closeout?
Mm-hmm.
And so you're allowed to, your project closeout goes, can go into the summer, that's just wrapping up the details, or that's...
Yeah, there's a lot of items that can be done during the summer, as far as, like, ordering the, for instance, ordering the, the new Greenheart wood for the decking. That takes, oh gosh, about eight months, from the day you order it, before it's finally shipped up and delivered to the city. So that can all take place. Project closeout, paperwork, all that stuff can take place, it's just physical construction in the coastal zone is not allowed at that time.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Will the CM contract cover the public information duties? Who will have that?
It, it can, it'll, it'll probably be a, it'll be a joint venture between staff and the CM.
Because that's a big item in the city, obviously. We talked about decking before, but can you remind us the two types of decking, and the decking that we're looking at, and the time, why it's so time-consuming to get that decking?
Sure, yeah, I'd love to.
Remind us just briefly, not, don't go along with dissertation.
We, we, I'll try to go quick. Two-thirds of the pier has already been redecked through previous projects, and the city has utilized a hardwood, as they call it, it's Greenheart, it's out of South America, actually.
South America.
South America. And it's, it's very dense, very sturdy, very, it's a hardwood, and it, it's got, I hate using these terms, but a very high fire rating, so it won't burn as quickly as prior wood that's on the pier, the old Douglas fir. Now, Douglas fir is readily available in North America, and it's used in a lot of construction, and it's a very solid, very, you know, useful wood material for houses and other things. This Greenheart will definitely hold its shape, it's a nice flat surface, a lot longer, it can deal with the weather a lot longer, and it's, it's a lot more dense, so it, it's more durable and...
And it matches the existing, and that was the whole purpose, a lot of reasons, I mean...
Correct. Three quarters of the pier has already been utilized that wooding, and we anticipate using it for the final...
It's not as knotty, it's a lot smoother, and, and obviously lasts a lot longer. The timeline, does that include all items for construction, like utilities, water, electric, you know, everything, basically the whole...
Correct.
Version of the pier as we know it.
Mm-hmm. The CM firm will, will help streamline with the contractor a, a scheduling for the items of construction, but there are certain things that can either be done at the same time as other items, and there's certain long-lead items that have to be done in a certain order in order to maximize efficiency and meet the timeline. So there's things, utility lines can be built at the same time, like at one part of the pier, while structural support members are reconstructed at the end of the pier, and, but more likely, you know, like, things like the decking would have to come last, that kind of stuff.
And last question I have is, how does the insurance money work with the CM costs and the material costs that concern, I don't know if you have that, you know, retail, but, I mean, everyone's wondering, you know, and we've been wondering.
And, and we will definitely plan on bringing much more concise updates within the next couple of months to council during some of those various activities that I mentioned on the screen.
Yeah.
At this point, we are still working with the insurance.
Okay.
It would, it would be speculation to give you definitive answers, but they have been very good to work with, and they anticipate cost sharing in items like this with the city.
Yeah, as long as it's forthcoming, I think we're okay waiting it out, but, you know, sooner is better than later, but we appreciate all the effort that you've put, and I know working with different agencies can be difficult, so. Well, I don't have anything else, anybody else? No, thank you.
So we need action on this item.
I'd like to make the motion, please, to approve the Request for Proposal for Construction Management Services for the Seal Beach Pier Improvement Project Number BP 1002.
Second.
Please vote. Passes four zero, thank you. Okay, there is no new business, and we will adjourn the city council meeting on Monday, March 12, 2018, at 5:30 PM, to meet and close session if deemed necessary. Thank you.
Good job, Mike.